Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order the last meeting of the Cherokee Village SID commissioners for the year 2021. So we are now called to order, and the first order of business is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, how many did we approve the agenda?
I second.
You moved in second that we approved the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The agenda carries. Thank you. Third is the approval of the November the 15th, 2021 minutes and the special meeting, which was held on December the 9th for 2021. So I would ask for a motion for the November 15th, 2021 minutes.
I'll move to approve those minutes.
I'll second that.
You moved in second that we're going to approve the 2021 minutes. Other than November 15th minutes or other, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Special meeting, December the 9th. We need to approve those. So I entertain a motion.
Okay, well, how many did we approve those?
I second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. They're approved.
Both of those.
Page two, signature.
Did you say two?
Page two. For signature on each one.
No, no, is that, is that what you're talking about? I think it's right up here. You know, he's kind of sitting right here.
I'm sorry. This one is just a two page.
It's a two.
Right here, this is our special one.
Yes.
It's getting complicated up here. Bear with us.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, number four, old business. docks on Lake Thunderbird, Winnebago Circle. Betsy?
Yes, sir. Just an update that we have spoken to the attorney that we had said last month, which was Devin Holder. He has sent a letter with no response. He tried contacting each one by phone before he sent this letter. He sent a follow-up letter on December 1st that said we would not be submitting any boat stickers or permits for those boats to be on the lake for 2022 if they were not corrected and in compliance by the end of the year. So I drove by on the way here, no change.
I thought Mr. Southern had.
I couldn't see any change at all.
Did he tell you verbally?
Mr. Southern had applied or replied to me on a call that he would, but that's been about 45 days ago now.
Yeah, they haven't done it.
Yes, sir.
Time to get ugly.
Okay, so at the end of the day, we told them the end of the year.
Yes, sir. December 1st, they had a 30-day notice that said they had until the end of the year to correct or they would not be issued any boat stickers. And Devin said at that point we'd be able to remove the boats from the lake. Our lake, our rules.
It's going to get interesting because I think we're going to get tried on this.
I think so too.
So we just, we're going to pick a course and pursue it.
I do have documentation from the original approval and a drawing that does not include that additional 16-foot gangway.
That's right.
So I do feel like that that's in our favor.
Yep, and they verbally told me to my face that they preferred asking for forgiveness rather than permission. So they're in the wrong, they know it, and they need to move back.
Yeah, I think so too.
Okay. B, Base Heart Campground Proposals.
I presented these to y'all at the special meeting.
Yes.
Pam?
We had two. One was the 39-year lease for the dollar that we had talked about before. And Country Tours came back with a newer proposal, more in line with like our Marina proposals, five-year deals. You had a copy of that. Did you review that after our last meeting?
I did, yes, I did. I'm just, I've got it here. I was looking for it in the front pocket, but I have it here.
I have a copy, Jim, if you don't have yours. Have you looked at yours?
I have.
I've looked at mine, yeah.
You want a copy?
No, I'm good.
Okay, all right.
I'd like to hear your thoughts, fellow commissioners, on either of them.
I don't have a good thought right now. I'm not prepared to.
Okay, I have a couple.
I'd like to hear it.
Does that surprise you that I have something to say?
No.
Joe?
Yep, well, I'll go ahead and, and I, and I've looked at the two and the, the immediately my, this River Country Tours has allowed for additional time to relocate the horse and race, though I don't know that we don't need it. It allowed for the horseshoe keeper, it allows additional time to do that and negotiation. And it has a five-year renewal contingency in it that the Buckland Desert. So those are things that I, some differences in the two that I, so your comments, your input.
Well, okay, I'll be really transparent. The proposal, there are two proposals on the table, and one of them, the one we're talking about, the one that came back seemingly to be better, I don't know if it's better or not, is a proposal from Jonathan Rhodes and his new company. And personally, I am not in, in, ready to jump back into that boat. I think there's a lot of good things happening on his side of the fence, but I'm not ready to do that today. I had a conversation with Betsy outside the last meeting. She wanted to maybe try it on herself, maybe make that attempt to redo the campground on SID's dime. And I thought it was a good idea. I thought it was something to explore. And that's kind of where I sit. I'd like to see it explored, not necessarily letting somebody lease it. But there's a line that we walk, and Mr. Matiloba actually brought it up last meeting. You know, the SID is here for a reason. It's here to create amenities for people that live here. It's not a for-profit necessarily company, right? So it's not, we don't need to be going out building things to attract people from Salem and, you know, that's not what your money is for. It's for the amenities that you get to use. So there's a line we walk. We own that property. Should we use it to create some income for ourselves? Or should we let somebody else do it? Create a nice amenity, but should we keep it ourselves? So I'm, that's kind of where I sit.
So I think, what is your?
What is your, I don't know what your position is.
My position is I say we explore, we let Betsy explore on her own, running it as an SID program, as not leasing it current, not leasing it at this point. Now, we can bring it back up next meeting and see what she's explored, maybe find an electrician, is it, how much is it going to be to update? Those things are something we really want to do. You suggested you might want to look into.
Initially, I did say that. I, I'd like to hear what Jim thinks about it.
I think you're talking about a multi-level program. One, do you want to make decent pull-throughs and campgrounds for people that come to visit our area or friends or relatives of people who own property here? Right now, we've got a mess. We don't have adequate electricity, we don't have adequate facilities, restroom facilities. We've got a storage facility that's not conducive to that campground. That can all be handled, but then you've also got the river property that you've got to think about. And do you want to get involved in that or not, knowing it's going to get washed away at some point in time? And that's just a guarantee. You know, it might go 100 years, but it's going to get washed out. So at the what level do we want to take this? That moves the number from probably 45 to 55,000, potentially $70,000 worth of investment. There's a long payback on that. That's why we can't get an attractive lease that wants to pay us anything because it's a long payback. I think we need to do something to the property.
I do too, and the thing about the lane is that if we're going to get it this year, it needs to be begun on right now. It doesn't need to be deferred till, because the longer we push it out, it's another year of, of poor service, if you will.
I am, I am noticing that both parties. Excuse me, I thought I had that off. I am noticing that both parties are here today.
Okay.
And if they want to talk about what, why their proposal is better than the other, maybe now's the time to listen to that.
That would be fine. I'll make sure.
Are you gentlemen prepared to talk about your proposals?
If that's what the commissioner wants, sure.
Well, it's just to forge you a little time to kind of talk about what you've got, the positives and negatives potentially. Don't everybody jump up and run. Yesterday.
Yeah.
Have you looked at any other campgrounds in the area and saw how they were run?
Yes.
Hardee's?
Hardy?
Which one?
One on the river in Hardy.
Right.
That the city is having somebody maintaining runs.
Yeah.
They haven't gone overboard at that particular one, but they are making a profit on it, a lot more than when they were leasing it up. So maybe the thing is baby steps and maybe just allow self-contained vehicles in there that can take care of their own sewer and water and everything, but don't just limit it to property owners. So that we're bringing people in, getting people familiar with it, and then off the money that you earn maybe the first year, start upgrading bits and pieces. That's how they're doing it, you know, little steps at a time, rather than going in for a revamp and then getting stuck with something.
And that's good and that's fair, but you have an electrical issue that you can't do the halfway. You're either going to be married or you're not married.
Right, but the first year, if they were self-contained units where they had their own generators and electrical and we weren't offering the service, then we could, like I said, not do that, but see how many, because there's a lot of big nice vehicles that'll park over there at Hardy. And a lot of people come through looking for more places, but in the past, I've always hesitated on saying Cherokee Village because you had to be a property owner to be able to use the facilities. If we open it up so that these people would be able to come through, and we not know right off the bat that we don't have electric for you, but to be able to park in such an area, be close to everything, it might be a, you know, the bee's knees for them.
All right, can I speak on it just for a second?
Sure.
All right, so just to correct what you're saying, Peter, we do have non-property owners and property owners who can go down there. $15 a night if you're a property owner, $22 a night if you're a guest. They have the electricity, they have a water faucet that they can hook a water hose up to, but the sewer or the septic is a dump station. So to have, you've got to unhook or undo what you need to do and take it to the dump station. This year, we've made right at $7,000 and we haven't done anything to it. I do think that there's potential there, but here's my deal. I've got a lot of stuff to cover. And as much as I initially came in here thinking, this is great, we've got an RV park and it's going to be the biggest thing that's going on all over the country right now, we're not comparing to what those other RV parks look like. Not the entrance to them, not the pads we set them on, not the water we hook them up to. You've got to walk through some treacherous terrain to be able to get to the river. The bathrooms are not great. So in my opinion, after conversations that it had, I think that's Peter's that's speaking about. Oh, there you go. After, you know, looking at the whole picture, I just felt like what was best for Cherokee was to have someone to come in that could manage it, that could make that dream come alive. And doing a five-year lease versus a 39-year lease gives us an end to that at some point if we ever get to the point where we wanted to expand or we wanted to do something different. But it would make someone else viable for bringing in the money and making those dreams or those things come true, that we just wouldn't be able to do it. I've got a pool out here in a facility we can't open. I've got another pool that needs some good repairs to it. We've got so many other areas. I just felt like initially I wanted it, and then when I look back at what it really needed, I felt like I couldn't do it justice. So do I, do we do it halfway and limp along? Or do we let somebody come in and develop it and make it something that brings more people to the community? And for me, that was what was best for Cherokee Village. So that's kind of how I went from one side to the other. This is not my decision. I presented what was given to me, but that's where I came from. If y'all decide today you want SID to do it, I'm going to give it 100%. But will I be able to do all the things that somebody else come in and leasing it can do? Not right away. So that's where I stand.
I don't think they can either. But why don't we, why don't we let these guys propose?
I was going to say that Hardy has a manager that comes in and lives on it and they maintain it during, and that's what they're basically getting, a place to park their trailer and stuff for free, but they have to maintain it.
I understand.
And there's people out in the world that do that.
I personally would like to hear from these two gentlemen, and then, and then we can take comments from people before we make any decisions.
Okay.
All right.
But you guys know me, I'm Eddie Ishmael. My wife and I live here year-round. Greta Ishmael's my wife. We own the Conal Mutt Pharmacy and native realty. As far as the proposals about which one is best, I mean, I've known Jonathan a long time, so it's, I'm not going to beat up at his proposal. And I don't know what his proposal looks like because I haven't seen it. What I will say is we've been, I'm obviously in the real estate area, that's what I do. In my mind, campgrounds are just another arm of real estate as far as nightly rentals. We've got a lot of the equipment in place. We've got people that were already working for us to help us do a lot of other things. You know, we looked at the campground as far as the electrical and the plumbing, and we're not really going to know what we have to do to it until we get in there and start doing it. I mean, an electrician's not going to be able to go out there and look at, you know, almost 30 acres and say, yeah, it's going to cost us, you know, $100,000 to do this many campsites. Like, they're just not going to know until they get out there and we start digging and set poles. You know, we're here for the long haul. We, like I said, we own multiple businesses here, we've got four kids, and we're going to be here until we retire, I guess. So, if you have any questions or, and as far as the term goes, I mean, the four-year term is not a hard term. I'm not opposed to reevaluating that or anything else, but we just didn't, this, this is actually our first time to do a proposal for something like this, and so we've never really jumped on it. We've done nightly rentals from, we owned a complex in Batesville for a while. We've owned nightly rentals here in Cherokee, long-term rentals, and so we've been, we've been doing this. Also, we've got some systems in place. We've also been researching systems to help make the campground do what we would need it to do moving forward and all that, so.
Thanks, Eddie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eddie.
I'm Jonathan Rhodes, and I've not seen Eddie's proposal, so I can't call him and I won't comment on Eddie's proposal. So the question of who's got a better proposal, that's up to you. I can't speak to Eddie and Greta other than to say that they're fantastic community and business leaders. Greta grew up here. They've invested a lot in the community. They're great people, they're good business people, but I can't comment about their proposal. Let me talk about our proposal. So my family's been here for 50 years. We've been in the property management business for decades. So we have a couple of businesses. One is just a regular real estate business, but one of our businesses is called River Country Tours. I'm sorry, I have a mint in my mouth. Which I'll throw away.
That was a big mint.
That was a big mint. One of our businesses is called River Country Tours. We've been in the, in the vacation rental business for decades. So a lot of you will remember the name Village Vacation. So back when there were, there was no such thing as an Airbnb and a VRBO, we were managing nightly rental properties, vacation properties here for decades. We bought that business 20, 30 years ago. And so we manage nightly rentals. We're expanding our hospitality business. So we've taken over a few other properties that are focused on nightly rentals and vacation rentals. One of the things that we realized for the future of the village is that the South Fork River is a really important part of this village. It's an underutilized part of the village mainly because the, most of the riverland's always been owned by the developer. And so when we bought out the Daggets 20 years ago, or 10 years ago, and became the third developer here, we ended up with a lot of the riverland. So we actually own 10 acres that adjoins this property. So if you think about the Base Heart property, we have 10 acres between Base Heart and the fire station that we own. So part of our proposal is that we have a vested interest also because we own adjoining land. So the land that we have currently has the, has had the community garden for some years on it. So our vision for a couple of years has been to try to figure out how we can take the South Fork River, part of, of the river that we own, and make it accessible to families. So the Spring River is a wonderful resource. It brings tons of tourism dollars to the community. Those of you who know about the Spring River know it has a reputation for, as a party river. We think that there's a lot of families who really want to spend time on the river. They want to camp, they want a RV, they want to fish, they want to float, not big extravagant float trips, but maybe just a tube. We think the South Fork River is perfect for that. We think it's, has an opportunity to bring tourism into the community that hasn't been here for a long time. We think that RV and camp is a completely untapped resource for this entire tourism economy, not just Cherokee Village. If you think about the Marina, the Marina, lots of guests, Peter, property owners and guests, and lots of just guests. So everyone who comes and stays by and large in a nightly rental, whether they're renting Eddie's nightly rental or they're renting Southern Pines or ours, are guests. And so as guests, when they stay here, guests of a property owner, they have access to those amenities. So that's, as Betsy was saying, the RV park hosts a lots of guests. I can remember growing up there. We did a 10-mile canoe trip with the Boy Scouts and we ended up at that gorgeous, underutilized campground down there that since it flooded in 2009 has essentially been shut down. I mean, it's just gorgeous river property. And yes, it flooded in 82, yes, it flooded in 2009, and yes, it will flood again, but it's property that really is a great asset and resource to this community. And we could be having people down there camping. The RV park is in disrepair. I mean, it just needs investment. I'm not telling you anything that you don't already know. And it's not that the SID can't do that, but I also recognize that you've got a tremendous amount of capital investment in deferred maintenance that has to happen, and you've just lost a bunch of your revenue. So in that spirit, I think partnering with private sector makes a lot of sense. You already do it on the Marina, you've done it in the past with restaurants, and I think that this campground, you know, the partnering with the private sector, you don't lose your asset. The improvement district retains an asset, somebody else improves it and operates it. And instead of you diverting your money or our money, property owner money, to staff and maintain and upgrade that facility, you can put it into other facilities. So I think it makes a lot of sense from a business budget perspective. We've been in business a long time. Like Eddie and Greta, we're not going anywhere. We're vested in this community, we're going to stay. We have the staff already in place, maintenance, lawn, repair, contractors, vacation reservations, front office, back office, to just scale up and, and do what needs to be done at that campground. So I appreciate the opportunity to, to present and have you answer questions if you'd have any.
Uh-oh, here he comes.
If you want to speak next, go stand behind him. If you want to speak next, go stand behind him.
I'm Dave Grigger, and I know y'all know me. Back in 2009, 2010, we purchased commercial property across from Lake Thunderbird Marina, and my wife opened a hunting, fishing, store-bought shop, which I might add during recession, first year, real keeping. We had started trying to get a proposal together, come to SID at the time to take on that issue right there in itself. And then, of course, the city shuts down. But anyhow, knowing what we had looked at, because I went out and bought property back then, and growing up in Perryville, coming up here as a kid, I saw the campgrounds working. I know it's a huge asset for, for SID. But after thinking on this, since I've heard that, I think I mentioned it right off the bat to one of y'all, and then was told that there was people interested in proposing this, I can see where, yes, the campground needs, or the RV park needs work. I've got people that come in once a year and we put them in there with their RV. I've really been thinking on this, and I think that this could be an asset for SID, an income for SID. I don't think we need to go in and spend 150,000, 175,000 to do everything off the bat, but I think we can go in, and I hate to say it, another committee, with people that have equipment or whatever that's willing to volunteer to come out and get a plot, draw out the outline of what y'all are thinking of on the property, and set up camping as the first phase. And I think we can do a little, do it at a little cost to SID. And then as this becomes a thing where we're getting people back in and using it, because I've used, I went out to South Fork, saddled before just to take a family camping, where I would have done the same thing here, pulled my RV and parked and cut a trail down to the river and you got access to it. As y'all know, that, no, we had a business here, we were doing, we started canoe rentals, kayaks, raft, and floating. And it was solely on people that wanted to float South Fork, which grew into providing for Spring River. So there's that drive there that people are looking for a family-friendly place to float. And they'll go, they'll canoe it, they'll kayak it, not quite fast enough for a raft, but you can put one out, we've done it. Tubing, people do that. I think by what Peter Martin said earlier, you get somebody to live on site, take the rental fees for someone coming in, and oversee it. And I think we can do that in stages at a lit, at a little cost to SID that will actually bring the income in for us. It may not be a whole lot, but I mean, a dollar counts, and it adds up. I don't think locking ourselves into a five-year lease, I mean, how? I mean, how are we going to mandate what they have to have done in that five years? And how are they going to recoup theirs money out of that in five years? I just don't, I think we can do that ourselves and I think it'd be another asset to draw people in. It's just my comment. And I'd be glad to sit down and ensure my life too, because like I said, in 2010, we were talking about trying to do this.
Okay, we got it.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Karen Page, I'm, this is not what I planned to talk about, but trails. I'm on a committee with trails, both city and with the SID. And what I see and am not hearing at all is anything about trails in that campground area. I mean, you got the, what's wonderful about trails, bicycling, walking, jogging, off-road, I'm not talking about putting pavement in there. I'm just talking about cutting trails. And if it floods, a big deal. When it dries out, people go back out and ride and walk again. And it's not, it's not huge. I've been on the river riding, off the river riding in Memphis area and they flood frequently. And that's where the best trails are, along the river. And it would be fabulous if that was included. I mean, you don't have to be camping right on the river, but you can certainly have a trail and it allows people to get down to it. And if you have off-shoes to get down fishing or whatever, would be great. But I hate to not hear that. You know, rivers are the best places for trails because, because of the flooding. Because once it dries up, it's good to go again. You just, you might have to do a little maintenance to it, but it's not going to be costly. It's just people getting out there and using it. And users ordinarily that I'm used to, we're the ones who help clear the trails when they come across a downed tree or branches or whatever. So I just want to hear about that.
Built into my mind, and I think both of these guys, yeah, we've got envisioned trails and other stuff when we talk about any type of camping type environment. It's to me inclusive.
Yes, I would hope so. I would hope that the campsites are going to be at to a point where it's, you know, kind of like it's property going down to the river and you can't do anything about it. There's no easement to, you know, to have a trail that goes along the river. But I would hope that in future plans and in this particular plan, that you would have a trail that's not locked out by campsites. You know, where people can use it, the campers can use it. Because they're going to be carrying their bikes on the back of their trail, you know, their do-hitties, you know. Just to, it's all inclusive to me is what I see. And I hate, I don't hear anybody talking about it. If it's not being talked about, it's like, oh, that wasn't in the plan. You know, I want to see it happen as a part of this.
So the question is, do you think that it should be leased out as a, as a property owner? Do you think it should be leased to one of these proposals or should SID take it on themselves?
That concerns me, leasing it out, because you're going to lose control. And like Mr. Gruber talked about, the five-year lease, I don't know how they can make money in five years and do anything. You know, 40 years, I can see that, but that's still, you're not getting any profit from it. A dollar a year, that's nothing. You're just giving your land up to somebody else. They're going to put investment into it and then they're going to get all, all of that back, which is great for them. But it doesn't do y'all any good as the lesser lessee, you know.
It does develop the land though without us having to pay for it. It's still our land, so whatever improvements are made to it, at the end of whatever lease it would be, those improvements belong to us and we didn't pay for them. So it'd kind of be in lieu of what money we would.
Right. And it goes back to the question that I've asked and that we've talked about. Is SID money for this, right? Is it for putting into a campground that somebody from Oregon is going to come and use and not want to? I mean, nobody from Cherokee Village is going to use the campground, I imagine.
Sure.
Right?
There's people down there using it.
I mean, well, you'll have a friend from Memphis come and visit you, but I mean, it's not like.
No, I'd go out.
But that's your dad. He's not a property owner. Oh, okay. So, so we could have property owners come in and use it as a, that's true. I'm with you. That makes, that makes more sense.
Thank you. I guess getting back to actually what the topic was then is, is how do you capitalize and share the, the profits in the future? They're doing all the work, but you still own the land. How do you get some profit out of that land?
Yeah, you don't.
It's not just sitting there outside of 40 years when most of us are going to be dead and the next generation is going to be, you know.
I'm not going to be dead.
I don't expect to be alive in 40 years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
I'm Bill Matzobova and number one, I live on the river, right at the corner pretty much of Flathead and Nikanda. And I have a double lot and it's very beautiful, goes right down to the river. Coming across Flathead, there's a piece of property on the right. And people that go down to jump in the river, because there's no place for them really to go to a beach around here, they go down to that river and the next thing you have is all kinds of cans and trash. And I mean, it's terrible. And I know that that land, when I checked it out, was owned by Mr. Rhodes. And he probably took the trash cans out of there because he wanted to discourage people from going on his property for liability or whatever. So number one, you got a problem with trash and cleanup. But as far as SID goes, I think SID needs to have a business head on their shoulder. And any business has to have profit to succeed. And I think that idea that I might throw out to you is I went up to a park in Arkansas that was, I guess it's one of the 7,000 parks in the state of Arkansas. And people pulled in with their trailer and they took reservations and they bought, they paid for a space. And then there was places where they could walk and lookout points where they could see everything. And so I think what I'm trying to say is the state of Arkansas might have some really great guidelines and they might have some way of helping you to establish one of these parks, because Arkansas is all about parks. They have tons of parks. They're very proud of their parks. And I think that they can take and put a lot of information on that would tell you how to do this correctly instead of just haphazardly going down, opening up a gate and throwing a bunch of gravel down and saying 20 bucks a piece for coming in. I think it goes a lot farther than that. And I think that probably take somebody like David Gruber or Peter Martin. And if those people are on a committee, they've been around this territory all their life. And I think they have a pretty good understanding of what the bad and the good is and the do's and the don'ts. And I think Peter Martin, you can tell me what you know about grants and parks and maybe the state of Arkansas being able to take and grant SID, a grant to be able to develop one of these parks. And I'll say this, where I came from in California, things started growing, growing, growing. And pretty soon you couldn't get a trail because they weren't planned out properly in the very beginning. And a lot of people go to these parks in Arkansas and you ask them what they did and they said, well, we got there, we camped out and then we walked on the nature trails. We walked down to the river. We fished. We took trails and walked out of picnic, that kind of stuff. So if you ask people that are going to these kinds of places, what are the three or four most important things to them? I think you're going to find that parks with trails. And the trails are probably one of the most important things at the top of the list. So I would say state of Arkansas, possibility of a grant. Peter, maybe you could comment on that.
Off the top of my head, I don't know, but thank you.
Thank you very much, Bill. So we're right back where we were.
Well, I suggest that, that we just let, you know, I would love to see you experiment just to reach out to some electricians, find out what it takes to put those, put those poles, you know, together correctly. What is it for step one? Or maybe organize a committee for that that says, okay, step one this year, 2022, may be $8,000. That's what we're going to commit to this project. And what does $8,000 get us?
Not much.
What is? You're trying to, I've been out there too and the electricity's there. It just needs to be upgraded. And I don't know how much that, you know, what's needed.
So I think what you're missing is that it's, the electricity doesn't make it to each one of the 15 campsites because there's broken wires in the ground. So you've got a few sites that you can camp at and you have some that you can't. I went out over the weekend. There is one light that lights the whole area. It doesn't light the whole area. It lights the bathroom. So there's definitely some lightage issues out there. We had a plumbing issue where the spigot breaks off and it's twirled around. And so that water shooted up in the air for about a week before the water company went down and let us know something was going on. So those are the kind of plumbing issues. I don't think there's anything that's a huge issue, but I don't believe that we can experiment. We either take it on and devote some money and some time into it.
We can investigate. It's not experimenting. I use the wrong word.
If we don't.
Just investigate it a little bit.
Before we debate this to death, what are we going to do? What's our proposal here? Are we delaying this for two weeks? Are we delaying it for two months?
I just told you, my suggestion is that we investigate it a little bit further, doing it on our own. I'm not prepared to award this to anybody, for me. Now, if you guys want to motion and move to vote on one of these two proposals, you have absolutely the right to do that.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, I'm just one dude.
And the point I was trying to make was that in March or April, we can't turn around to either one of these guys and say, okay, we've changed our mind. We can't do it now. We want to let y'all do it. Because then they've missed their target to be able to get prepared.
They're not going to get it started anyway right now, so.
I think they are. I think both proposals were to get started in January because they want to take advantage of camping in April.
Okay, we either got a.
May I say something better? And I know I'm trying to get out of the interest, but I just for the commission, electricity is one thing. Pick one of these proposals or die. But just know that if you want to run a really good camp RV, electricity is one of many pieces down there. We're talking about an experience that you cannot, you're not providing right now to attract more people. And it's more than just electrical poles. So there's a huge investment to be made down there. And if SID is going to do it, you've got to start it. You've got to, you've got to make all the improvements. You've got to market it. You've got to do all the pieces that really is a business.
So your proposal is to spend how much per year?
Well, I proposed that I said, we don't know exactly what the cost is. My proposal was, we think it's going to at least be $50,000.
But your proposal was set out over five years. You wouldn't spend 50 grand tomorrow, I'd imagine.
No, I won't do it tomorrow.
Well, over the next day. I mean, you wouldn't do it.
But in order to get it operational the way that we would want to by this summer season, phase one, we're going to have to spend a considerable amount of that money to get it going.
Do you know how much that is?
I don't. Without going down there and doing the proper due diligence, we've been down there a lot and we've done probably a little bit of what you've done, which is eyeballing and understanding kind of what the problems are and what the issues are. But we didn't put a specific dollar amount because we don't, we haven't been able to get an inspector and do the proper bids. I'm just saying that it's not just about going and fixing a pole. And so if SID wants to do it on top of everything else that you're doing, you've got a lot of work to do down there and it's not just about mowing and getting it ready. Then it's the operational part of it and it's the marketing part of it. It's the client relationship part of it. And it's the managing of the guests coming and going and the reservations. It's all parts of that year-round, not just in the summer season. Because the reality is that Base Heart needs to be a year-round asset. It's not a single, it's not like the pools where you shut it down. People are down there RVing for Thanksgiving and for Christmas.
Sure.
And it should be run year-round, but it's going to take a lot to do that. And it's not just something that you can just mow and then hope it just operates.
Why?
Because it works.
There are other things that.
Hold on, hold on.
Whoever takes over the campground has got to, one, there's competition in there. And I'm not talking about hand, I'm talking about campgrounds in general. So you're competing with party. You're competing with cycling and mountain view.
Parshing.
So just, just so everybody knows, if you want to get Wi-Fi down there at Base Heart Park Campground, it's a $13,000 upfront investment for them to come out there and set their pole.
And then there's not really a lot of service down there for your phones to be working.
And that's not, that's not even.
People expect Wi-Fi.
And those are some of the things that you have to keep in mind. And that's just to set the pole. That's not to do all the Wi-Fi stuff to push it out to all the campgrounds. Because there's another significant investment which won't be known until you get somebody else. It's like what Jonathan's saying, there's no way to know what we're going to have to put in for water, electric or anything because you're talking 30 acres, give or take, to get, one, get those 15 sites where they're all working. Like Red's father states there, there's only one or two sites that have complete hook-up with water and power, both working at the same time. And then the rest of them are some of the power works, some of the water doesn't work, or things like that. And so it's, I mean, there's a big investment just to get those things going. But the lower part where there's not anything at, there's no telling what that's going to cost until you get down there and start pulling. Yes, sir, Mr. Matzobova?
Well, let me ask you this. Would you and would Mr. Rhodes be willing to get with Mr. Gruber and the three of you form a committee and help develop through SID?
That's a tough place, Mr. Matzobova.
I don't think.
Why you ever step in here?
As a thought, you'd come up with the three people's ideas.
I think two competing operations or vying for the same thing are not going to work that well together.
Let me ask you this. Let me ask you, let me ask you gentlemen this. This is a little off the wall, but I've been known for off-the-wall stuff. You both are, are members of the community for a long time. You both have been here for a while. You both are going to be here for a while. I like the both of you. I've never, I mean, I think the both of you would run a very good, a very good campground. Is it possible for the two of you guys to have a conversation about and come up with? You're the only two proposals. So is it possible for the two of you to have a conversation about maybe who should do it? I mean, do you want us to just choose? Is that your deal?
I don't understand what you're. You've got two business people who made you a business proposal. And now you're asking us to get together and put our business proposals together?
As property owners, I thought you guys might talk to each other and see what's best for our community. I guess not. I'm good. Okay.
I mean, we make, you ask for proposals. We make business proposals.
I've got no bids. I don't have any money proposals. I got no bids. I have two companies that want to build, that want to take the.
You've got two companies who've done what you've asked, which is they provide your proposals. And the bids are, they will, they will come in and take over so that it's no longer your cost to do that.
I get that, but I have no bid, I have no money involved, right? There's no money out there. There's no, what? I don't have anything from you saying, this is how much I'm going to spend in year one. I just asked you that.
I just told you the amount because you weren't listening. I told you the amount and it's in the proposal.
It's in a proposal.
How much is it? Can you tell me?
I told you that we estimate it could be at least $50,000.
In year one is what I mean. Do you have that broken out over your lease?
We have it broken out over five years because we don't know exactly what that, we think that a lot of it's going to probably be spent on the early phase of it, yes.
Which is year one. That's what I, that's the only, that's the question I asked. I just didn't get an answer to that one.
Well, again, I did, but it's not the answer you wanted, I think.
No, I was just trying to figure out.
The proposal, it tells you.
I get it. I get it.
I want to call for a motion.
That's fine.
I want to call for a motion. I want to move, move that this be resolved at the next, in the January 2022 meeting. It's got to get resolved and we're just beating it to death.
Keep moving on this agenda. You can call me anytime you want to ask all these questions.
Move for a second.
I'll second.
Been moved, motions have been made and seconded that we postpone this decision until the January meeting.
Like what do y'all need in the next month?
To make a decision, like what kind of information do you want from us? From like, what do we need to resolve between our proposals to give you the information?
We will let you know within the next three to five days what we need.
Thank you. I'll get with y'all.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carries. Next item.
Do you see a fire hydrant? What we just finished talking about?
Yeah, I just want to ask one question.
All right.
Could you, could you get some of the other people here and maybe share some information with them as far as the proposal goes? And get some input from that, from the, from the people who are here, just give you some input from that as well. You want, you want to look at the proposal?
On the individual proposals?
Get some input, let us share the proposal with, like, me, a couple of others, and we'll go, hey, this one looks good. This one looks good. What is this? What is this?
Well, I was hoping that they would share that when they came up here and talked about exactly what they planned on doing to the park.
I understand why they don't want to do it right here.
Look, let's see what we can do.
I'm in business as well, but I mean, if you, you get some people who, who don't, who don't have fat fire like they do, maybe it gets some input.
I, I, I agree with that, as long as we understand that we're not gonna share proposals and then take more proposals. That would be totally
You manage that with Betsy?
They may look into campgrounds with Mary.
You manage that with Betsy, please?
Yep, yep.
All right.
No problem. No problem.
She knows how to get ahold of them.
Okay. Fire hydrants. I don't know what's gonna happen, but at the end of the day, we're probably could get in, in a litigation with the city. We have made our case to the city.
Rerun that. Not the city, the water.
The water, I'm sorry. Water. Cherokee Village Water.
Thank you.
Water, yep.
We've made our proposal. We're paying through the end of the year. We intend to cease and desist starting in January. They have re, rebuck, rebuffed that and said, you must continue to pay. Not gonna happen. It violates every covenant that I can think of in terms of what we've been doing and what we've been paying for. So that is a monster budget number. And it's not gonna be pretty if we don't take this thing till it's logical end, and we have legal opinion that is on our side. That doesn't mean that we'll win in court. It means we have legal opinion on our side. So that's about all I can divulge to you on that.
Is part of the settlement? There was nothing on that?
It is part of the settlement and not part of the settlement. It doesn't specifically say, but it removes us from the fire hydrant issue. And that's one, been one of their drum beers, if you will.
I went down to their board meeting and asked for reports of what they've ever done, and they came up with three items. I gave it to the mayor of the city. I mean.
Thank you.
They need stopped.
Well, uh, update on Omaha Pool.
Uh, spoke with Memphis Pool last week after our special meeting. They're having a problem with finding a steel contractor. They were trying to get someone out of Little Rock. I informed them, West Plains, Mountain Home, Batesville, were also close, close proximity to us. He said that would be real helpful. I still haven't gotten a solid number. My hopes are that a portion of our surplus cash from this year will be able to be applied to a down payment to purchase materials to fix that pool for Omaha, and then the remainder would be done in '23 when the pool would actually get to be reopened. But at this point, I do not see any physical way that we can make the repair to the Omaha Pool and have that pool open for summer 2022. Hope we can get started on it, but I don't see it getting opened.
Landscaping?
I provided y'all with the proposal from the Jonesboro Company. Um, that's the company that I feel the most, um, excited about. I think their proposal was right in where I thought it would be. Um, it would be a 12-month proposal. They would cover 22 locations, which is basically every park, every marina dock, uh, dams, Omaha, Thunderbird, everything but the golf courses. Um, and they would take care of leaf removals, cutting, uh, they'll do pre-emergence for some of the weeds. I think that it would make those areas look the best they've probably ever looked. It also eliminates seasonal employees. Insurance on equipment, parts and labor to fix equipment, uh, insurance on the equipment. I mean, there's just a whole lot that goes into that particular department that would be eliminated by subcontracting that workout and making somebody else responsible.
What's your net gain?
Savings?
$47,000 that I'm gonna redirect into a building and maintenance department.
You looking for a motion?
Yes.
Me too.
Yeah. I move it.
I'll second.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Been moved and seconded. We, everybody know what we're trying to do here, because this is parking wreck stuff. We've got equipment falling apart. We'd have to repurchase that equipment. We've got seasonal employees. It's our biggest hotspot problem employee area right now. We can offload this puppy for 50,000 to our gain and try it at least for a year. It's a, it's a no-brainer to me.
So we got a motion and a second.
The 12-month contract.
So.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carries. Betsy?
Thank y'all. Thank y'all. I think it's gonna make a, a big improvement. I think it'll be something everyone will notice.
I hope, or they'll shoot us.
I'll be out there with my weed eater.
I'll see if those leaves are on that.
I don't think they'll start till March, but, uh, once we get through this meeting, then I told him I'd get back, but then we go from there with, without a contract.
Can you do the, can we do the John Deere?
They will do the deal. Sir?
John Deere lease.
John Deere leases. Mr. Ditas was next. Have we settled what we needed to know about yours? All right, that takes care of Mr. Ditas. John Deere lease is in your packet.
Yes, it is.
Should be underneath your landscape proposal.
Yep.
We looked at the cost of the equipment at the special meeting on the ninth. Commissioner Lee went back and spoke with them about a lease, which we think is the smarter way to go, five-year lease. I think he's put his blessing on it. I brought a copy of the contract. I have the original. I just gave each one of y'all a copy, but I'd like
You gave us the lease information last night at the special meeting as well.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's a fair market value lease. It's a good residual. You got a good price from the manufacturer. I mean, it just makes sense. Now, you don't have a stipulated buyout at the very end, which is good. You want the, you want it to be fair market value.
Yes.
You'll kind of know at the end of that lease.
I believe he said at five years, we would be the option of turning in and getting more equipment, so we continuously be able to keep our equipment in working condition.
Yeah, when you lease, you never really want to buy that equipment. The idea is to go ahead and lease another piece of equipment at the end of that five years. That's the goal. Now, if something happens, and you don't need all this equipment, then you can redirect that and buy that piece of equipment at the end. But the, the goal is to be able to turn it in and, and be, by using, uh, Wells Fargo, somebody associated with John Deere. Any abuse issues or any over hour issues, those things will be kind of squashed by the dealership that you're using. So I think it's a good deal.
Well, I also believe too that, uh, there'll be a few items from Park and Rec that we'll be able to use at the golf courses, but that we will have another surplus sale.
Good, good.
So something for the future.
I'm over with that.
What's the total amount of money?
Second.
Four.
For the, for the, is it four pieces?
For the John Deere equipment, it is nine, nine pieces. And then four, look on your lease. You got a copy.
How much, how much money in a lease payment? It's five grand, something like that?
Five grand, uh, twelve, yeah, five grand a month. I've got too many numbers.
No, I think you're right. Five grand a month.
Right at five grand. And I budgeted that to split between each property, South and North Course. When you look at the budgets, I divided that expense up. Still gonna come out capital, but I've divided it by each property.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt this.
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose no. Done. The lake, the update on the Lakeview lot now, is that, has that been resolved or not resolved or what?
The update on the Lakeview lot?
Yeah, that's
Philip Ditas?
Oh, that's done.
Oh, yes, sir.
Before the meeting, yes.
We, we took care of that before the meeting.
You got it?
Yep. But he's good, so we're good.
I don't know what we did, but I'm glad we did it.
You're on the same page.
Phillip's gonna talk again, I guarantee it.
Year-to-date income and expense?
Uh, I left a copy for everyone that would like on the back table. It's gonna give you an overview of your year-to-date numbers. And then as you go through into the adjoining pages, it'll have each category, each location, income and expenses. So we're, we're pretty much on track, uh, with what was projected for 2021. We've got a few items that are over, but we've got some that are under. I think our biggest items that I noticed on the budget was that we were below budget because of the, um, Omaha Center with the pool being closed. That kind of skewed that budget because of water and chemicals and, and the income. Um, and expenses were below budget in every category year-to-date. So we still got one more month left of 2021, but it looks like they did a, a good job staying close to what our budget was for that.
Okay, Midlake Marina boat slips?
Midlake Marina and boat slips. I don't know if Mr. Paul is here. Um, we, we, I, I'm updating a contract that was last signed in 2000. And what that contract stated is that he got two free boat slips. Now he is up to four boat slips, two covered, two uncovered. I know that that has been a long relationship, and I don't want to sever that relationship, but I also don't want to lose that income from those boat slips. So in my lease, I project they pay for their boat slips. We don't get any money off any income from the rentals or any sales or gas or anything else at the marina. I feel like that those boat slips are our only asset there, and who, whoever is parking there needs to pay for them. So that would be, my suggestion is no free boat slips for Midlake Marina.
Okay.
And I copied a, I made a lease agreement in here for y'all to look at if you want to. It's not due until next month.
You do it.
So where, where would they put their rental boats when they rent?
They'll pay for it.
Okay, so they probably won't do that. Is there, is there an alternative for them to just like park their, a rental boat?
I think they will do it.
You think so?
I think they will do. I think they will do.
There's no question. Let's, I'll, I'll move to adopt that policy then, if you think he'll do it.
I think he'll do it. If he doesn't, I have a wait list.
Yeah, there's a waiting list, I know.
Property owners who will.
But he is still gonna rent boats, so he'll have to have just a, some place to park it before the owners show up to rent it. You know what I mean?
Well, I, I think that that would be something he'd have to negotiate with us if he doesn't want to pay for the covered slips.
Yeah, so I was wondering if you, if you had that conversation with him.
No, I have not. We talked about him not having four free slips. He brought in a lease. He wanted to buy two, get two free. I, I would feel like we don't need to give anything free. They're already making money off of the business they're running out of there. We get nothing from that. They pay us nothing. Why are we giving them free slips? And if they don't want them, we got other people that would. And one day in the future, I would suggest we look at putting some more boat slips out there. Wider slips for newer boats.
Yeah.
Got a wait list. Sir?
On Thunderbird, down at the corner, though.
Right, right.
Okay.
What's your thought? You want to adopt that? You guys want to vote on that?
Well, I just
That's part of her operation. I think she's empowered to do it.
No free. Y'all agree? I'm moving forward with that.
Rock on.
Let's go.
Uh, employees' policies and procedures. I've sent y'all copies of all those. The main things that we changed on those was sick time, vacation time, um, some of the forms that we're, we've been using. You know, I hear this over and over, but this is the way we've been doing it for years. And I'm trying to bring this up a little bit closer to 2000. So I've got some new forms. I made some changes to the employee policies and procedures. If y'all agree with those, we're gonna roll out with those.
I'm good with them.
Okay. Um, budget approval.
Yeah, I, I don't care what I mean. I, I used to do that. Back in, it was a long time ago. I used to do that.
Okay. Um, the budget approval, I did, my budget was 26 pages long. It gives all the narratives, recaps. All the numbers are in there. I chose not to make 20 copies of that today and bring it. I did post it on CVSID.org on our website, and I put in a financial tab. So it will have a copy of that budget if anyone would like to read that in great detail. I've sent that to y'all already in advance before today. I don't know, do we have a separate meeting for discussed budgets? Is that something we do now? I don't, I don't know how y'all wanted to do that. It's my first budget with y'all.
We gotta approve the budget and go forward.
Okay.
Today.
Because we're still fishing around.
But we can say wait, wait, wait until January, it'll be all right. But whatever you, you guys want to do.
I'm ready to go.
I am too.
I've just got a couple of questions, and then that's it. And then I'm ready as well. I think it's very well done, by the way.
Thank you.
With the information that you have.
Well, and this is the old system, the way they always did it. It won't be the way I do it next year, but I'll have more time to prepare next year.
Actually, I think you're, honestly, I think you're a little, um, optimistic in, in some of your income
Okay.
additions. But that's okay. I mean, that's, you, you kind of want that. Uh, you're, and I'm just gonna kind of just
Yeah.
ask these as I go, but you're, the, the majority of your increases are, are at the North and South Course?
Yes.
Because you've got a plan to hire or put somebody in charge of golf? Is that the deal?
Well, I'm gonna be honest. I have not set this budget up to, for me to fail. I have not. I have not gone in there and added 10 and 20 and $30,000 because I dream of something big. I looked at a lot of the numbers that we actually hit this year. And at the South Golf Course, we exceeded the budget by $23,000. And at the North Golf Course, we exceeded the budget by $14,000. So I kind of left those numbers where they were.
Don't forget, that's the year after COVID, and COVID was a big hit down. So the next budget was kind of gradually
Well, what I took was the actual year-to-date numbers. So if they budgeted X and we were, were sitting at Y at the end of November, I went with Y's number. Now, I may have added a little bit extra for tournaments at the South Course. We had six tournaments budgeted in the past at, at $1,000 apiece. I bumped it to 10. Still left it at the thousand. We're gonna make money there. I have set this budget up to be a queen at the end of next year and not to be in the dirt. Yeah.
So this, this person you hired for golf or want to, can you, can you tell me about that?
Yeah.
That's Mitch Wright. He's already an employee, Mitch, that lives over by the North Course. And Mitch has a lot of experience with merchandising. He does fundraisers as his career in the past. Um, and he's an avid golfer. He lives right there at the North Course. He's the house in the parking lot just about.
Is that a, um, is he, is that gonna be part-time or full-time?
It's a full-time position, but he'll be split between the two locations. So he'll actually get payroll as a part-time at each place. But he will be a lot of the person that will organize, help us get our tournaments together. He'll do our schedules. He'll do our merchandising. He, he's gonna be a great asset for me because I've got to have somebody to help me, and I think that he is the right one. He was also referred by his peers, by the other people that worked at the course, people that have been there a long time, that I went to and thought, that would be my person, and they said, this is really your person.
And he's also been here. He knows the people. He knows the operation. He runs Gulf Pro Shops, so.
Right, right.
I think he'll do a good, I think he'll do a good job.
But I did split that payroll to go to each side.
Okay.
Yeah, so he's gonna run tournaments. He's gonna create, uh
He's gonna do the schedules. He's gonna do the tournaments. He's gonna do the merchandising.
Schedules for the, uh, employees at the
Both employees, mhm.
Okay.
He'll be my one person I can go to when it comes to golf course stuff instead of trying to piece it together.
If I'm seeing this right, you've got some membership dues that you're raising, or that you're, you're going up on.
What page do you want?
Uh, just on annual dues, and I assume those are for golf courses.
Annual dues.
Uh, section two, uh, it's right after the income breakdown by category.
Okay.
So you've got membership dues going up about 5,000 a year, the variance of 5,200. Do you see that?
Right at what we actually brought in this year.
Okay. Uh, do you see continually, do you see more people that want to join, or do you, are you raising fees to get there?
No, no. Y'all did not vote to raise any fees. The only fees that I read raised was the trail, the shed and the electric. I left everything else alone with golf. And I think that with our golf committee, um, we're gonna be able to increase some play. They've got some ideas of doing some weekend stuff, uh, some more punch cards, you know, trying to increase play without membership increase. So I think that will help us go up on some of our other fees as well.
Yeah, you've got, between the two courses, you've got, you know, 30-plus thousand dollars in increases just in green fees, people that don't have memberships. So that's, that's a, that's a pretty big number.
Yep, yep. Well, you see right there, North Course, 14,000. That's an actual number as of the end of November. Look at those actuals. That's where I got that from.
Okay.
Same thing at the South Course.
You've got an addition here that I marked for other income, which is associate members. Can you tell me what your thought is with?
We collected that money last year, and I, from what I understood, that that was a $300 associate member fee for someone who was not a property owner could purchase this associate membership and then be eligible to buy memberships. Golf memberships, pool passes, things like that.
You just put the same number back in? You just put the same number back in?
Same number back in. Yep, and it was not a line item last year. I wanted to show that as a line item, so that's why I added it.
That's an interesting number, isn't it? I didn't know that many people were associate members.
I didn't know they were. I didn't know there were that many either.
Yeah.
I would have thought there was like three or something.
There's not.
That seems to be a lot.
Well, that's good.
Yep. You'll see a big slope down in that interest income. I'm not sure why it was budgeted last year for $7,400, but we've only brought in the 1257, so that's what I went back with.
In your expenditure comparison between the approved budget and this, and, and your 2022 operating budget? Why, there's a, there's, the Omaha Center's got a pretty big variance.
Because last year it was budgeted to have a pool running and it didn't happen.
It was budgeted to have a pool running?
Yes.
2021, Omaha was budgeted.
It's probably around that $75,000.
Omaha yearly budget was $19,100 and we're at 85. So big dip. And I didn't budget Omaha for 2022.
Okay. Question about the pools and the swimming at your own risk and not bringing back the seasonal lifeguards. I did a little bit of investigation and I think there's a difference between municipal pools. I think there's class A and class B and class C pools and what's required. And I think we do fall into that B or C category, uh, which is that I don't think they're required.
Right, swim at your own risk.
But it seems weird. I mean, I don't know.
Um, I reached out to the municipality insurance company that we have and asked that question. Did we pay more for the high dive if we had a low dive? They said it was grandfathered in, but it was still an insured, appendix, I think is the word that they use because we have diving boards, period. So it wouldn't matter if it was high or low. Diving boards, period, fell into that certain category. They said that because we are a municipality and because of it being private, that we would not be required to have the lifeguard. So that's what made me choose to put in some money for some science, swim at your own risk. We'll still have an attendant that will be up in the front if there's an emergency. We have our red phone, our 911 phone that's out there if there was an emergency. That's what's required.
Is the, I know we wouldn't go back with diving boards if we redid stuff here.
Yes.
Is there a diving board at Thunderbird?
Yes.
There is a diving board. Is it deeper than six feet there, I would imagine?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I think that's all I had.
I've got one more thing I'll bring out that you haven't sent anything to, which is Get Your Gummy Beach. Put some money into Get Your Gummy Beach. Not a whole lot.
Hopefully the parking lot.
No, it wasn't the parking lot. I need to, I need to increase some money there. I need to increase some activity. And so I'm proposing that we purchase three pieces of equipment. One would be a kayak. One would be a paddleboard. One would be a pedal boat. Two people in a pedal boat, one person on each. It would be something that we would offer as a rental. We can store them inside the, the building up at the top. Go back to the concessions. $90, I can get one of those rotating hot dog machines. We can do hot dogs, bag of chips, ice cream, candy, canned drinks. I think it will pay for the person that will be there. I think we'll make our money back the first season on $1,500. We might invest in those three pieces of equipment. And I think it might withdraw some more people over there. You know, it's free. It's the beach. Y'all put some sand down there last year and people said it had the most people there they've ever seen last year.
We've got to look at the parking lot though.
Yeah, we need to look at the parking lot.
Yeah, it's pretty ugly.
I don't know.
Just that lower section.
Yeah. It might need, if you just put in some SBT, maybe it'll roll it, you know, and hoe it. You'll have to replace it. It's about $44,000 to redo it, so.
Yep, yep. Let's see, let's see if we can get some breath over there and see if people will come around and then hatch that parking lot.
So in, in summary, I mean, if, if all your dreams come true.
I got a good budget, don't I?
And all the, well, I don't know. We'll have to see how the year goes. I've, I've seen many of these go to hell in a handbasket. But if it all goes the way Betsy plans, uh, the, the revenue stream that we are be able to spend in this next upcoming year is in excess of $700,000. So as.
Wait, 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 wait.
Now again, depending on.
Forget that. We have a pending situation.
Yes.
So just kind of put that to bed.
What's the pending situation?
We're about to enter into a potential lawsuit.
With the waterworks?
That's right.
Without waterworks.
Yeah, that's a 30 piece of water. You know, that's $172.
We'll see. But anyway, it's a good, it's a, it's a good, a great start.
Yes, yes.
I think it's, I liked it in detail as well and I think it's, uh, it's a good budget.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. And, and it, but it does face you with some challenges for, you know, some things. And I think it helped me that way.
I think so too.
Instead of being safe and you need to have a little bit of a target to hit.
And I feel like too, that, you know, we've got to put the money that we're bringing in back into it. This, I'm not trying to build a bank. I just want to make sure that we have the money in the beginning of each year to get us started for our season. And at the end of the year, we've invested that money back into those amenities. That's, that's my mindset.
American land tower.
Did you look at that? $72,000 payout or we continue. Right now we collect $537.50 every month, 12 months out of the year. Every five years, we get a 7% increase. And our last increase was 2019. So she reached out to us. I believe they have more carriers that now want to go in with them. It is no change to the tower, no additional space, nothing goes into that. But they'll offer a $72,000 one-time payment or we continue with our monthly payments with an annual increase every seven years or every five years.
Which is the better course? We're going to stick the course.
You feel?
That's what I think.
Is that what you think?
I mean, in the long term, that tower's not going anywhere. So that's just continuous income.
That's what we have decided in the past and they jumped up their, their amount about 20 grand over the last one, I think.
Really?
The last one I remember, anyway, so.
Well, if y'all agree on the annual, I will go back to her and ask her to send us the annual agreement and in January, we'll move it out.
If you need an option, we will do it, but I don't think you do.
I don't think you do.
Okay, okay.
Election model.
Yep.
Will you pay it from settlement, I'm sorry?
No. If you look behind.
If you're asking me how, I don't know.
I gotta, I'd have to have a separate conversation with you.
Okay, well, just for your info, I've got a little sheet in there that kind of gives you a breakdown of where we stand financially.
Okay.
And then if y'all want to have your discussion about where from what, we have till the end of the month.
I'm back in town this week. Can I come see you sometime this week?
Yeah, we're, we're open Monday through Wednesday this week, Monday through Wednesday next week.
Okay.
Election model and a pretty timeline. I think Joe came back and got me straight with my As and Es and all my lettering that wasn't done right. I sent y'all a new updated one.
Yeah.
I'm cool with it.
What good is you?
As long, did the election commission approve it?
Well, the, Ms. Draper is here. Ms. Ms. Deanne, there you are. Ms. Deanne, will you stand up for a second? Ms. Deanne is on our election committee and has agreed to be our election chairperson. I've been sending stuff back and forth.
What are you, crazy?
Hey, she figured out the first meeting, this is grunt work and she has not stopped. I appreciate you so, so much.
Good for you.
Yes, and, and so today what we put on the back table was the one-page timeline, which was this page. And from this month going forward, it tells you every month what the next step of the election is. I think the most important thing is to know that in March, uh, or in February, we'll be doing our nominations. So if there's someone you would like to nominate, come to the February meeting. That person being nominated needs to be here as well. Or they can bring a notarized letter that says they accept the nomination. You'd have to bring that to the meeting if the person couldn't come. But I think that's our next real important, uh, when things will start happening for the election. This is the next little handout. I'll get right to you, I promise. This little handout kind of tells you about the rules of the election, the rules of regulations. And we've kind of gone through and talked about the general stuff, the election day, the nominations, how the voting will take place. We will be at the Omaha Center for early election. We will be here for election day. We will read our ballots in open meeting for everyone that wants to come and listen as one by one, the ballots are opened and read. Okay, and that will be done. Election day is going to be the 11th of April. Anybody else that wants to volunteer for that committee, we appreciate it. It is some grunt work, um, but I think that it'll be rewarding in the end because we're going to start out with the freshman, new set of files. So any questions on that? He had a question first, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Cheers for two oh. My name's Art Ritter. I'm on the nominating committee. I appreciate you three commissioners and Beth. I know you work miracles. Here's one I'm going to give you. On the second page, nomination notice. Notice of the semi-annual nomination and election meeting shall be mailed to each property owner at least 30 calendar days prior to the third Monday in January. How do we do that?
It's going to be really hard to do.
Oh, the meeting shall be mailed to each property owner. I should take out the 30 calendar days, I'm sorry. I love y'all proofreading for me, I really did. Prior to, okay. All right, I'll make that correction, Mr. Ritter. Thank you.
How many letters are we going to have to mail out?
It's going to be right at 9,000.
9,000. And you know, we only have four people that show up at our meetings.
Needs some more help.
It's going to be impossible. We're not going to get done until May.
Oh, no, no, no. We're going to get done and, and we have a committee of some volunteers that are going to help to stuff some envelopes. I'll tell you something else that I purchased was a letter folder. Oh my gosh, you can stack up to 200 sheets in there and one by one it folds and we stuff them in the envelope and off we go. So we, we've got a few things, but I'll appreciate any help you'd want to come and set it up.
We do have more volunteers in the wings.
We need them.
We do.
Grandchildren are fine too.
No, ma'am. Yeah. We're going to get a process down. It's going to work great. Yes, 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 sir. Mr. Peter? It's so hard to hear you with your mask on, I'm sorry.
Qualifies as, as a voting member because you are selling associate memberships. Does that qualify them to vote then too?
No, no. Not a property owner.
Is it one property owner per, per household or two?
It says that it depends on who's on your deed. So if it is you and your wife, then you each get a vote.
Well, if it's in a trust, then there's four people on it.
Uh, it tells you about a trust on here. It goes through and says, and I believe it's two. Corporation trust and commercial multiple owner properties, two votes.
And you have to designate who they are.
Correct. They have to be a, a, a letter that says who those two votes will be for that corporation or trust.
I still need to know when that election class is that we're required to pay.
I have had the hardest time getting them to return my call. I believe it's because of the holiday. So I've left a couple of messages. As soon as I know, you'll be my first call.
Right, just email me.
Okay, no problem.
And do you have a closing date for the mail coming in? I mean, it has to be postmarked by such and such a time?
For the absentee ballots?
For the election period. Because if we're doing 9,000 people out there, you've got to have a closing date. But we're not going to take any more things past such and such a date.
Well, nothing is accepted after April 11th, that's 6 o'clock PM. So there's some terminology in here about absentee votes. Mailing those absentee votes off, you have to give them a self-addressed stamped envelope to send it back. But they only have to collect what comes through that day.
You going to go back down?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just got a question about the, about this. I, I don't know, I'm sorry I missed the last meeting.
That's okay.
But do you have any criteria for people who are to serve?
If you look through what we handed out today, it's going to tell you what that criteria is.
The one piece I want to ask about.
Okay.
I don't think anybody should serve who owns a business that has any contracts with Sid.
I believe that is one of the stipulations. Family members of Sid, there, there gives a whole list of who gets.
Don't have any, any, any questions?
Correct. Well, when we talked this up, there was something in there that said that, that couldn't be. Couldn't be a relative, couldn't be a boyfriend, a girlfriend, y'all would say.
I'm saying, look, I didn't see that.
Um, I, I don't with me, but I'll get you one. I'll email you one too.
Karen, did you have?
Yep, this is my portion of the agenda.
There you go.
I thought you already stood up.
No, I stood up for the, they thought the trail on the green ground, that was separate.
You going to talk to hell again?
Yes, I am.
And I told you Philip was going to, I thought Philip's not even done yet.
Did you get the condition?
Yeah, oh yeah, I got bits in there.
Because I know everybody wants to adjourn and it was late, 4:30, oh my goodness. Okay, um, I'm going to read some stuff that, and it's all related to trails and then it's going to conclude or in part of, it's going to talk about the importance that SID has in this. Okay. Cherokee Village desperately needs trails to help improve our lifestyle fitness and wellbeing. Trails are extremely effective at getting people to exercise and, you know, SID is part of Cherokee Village. By reducing healthcare costs, every dollar spent on trails means $3 returned on medical benefits. Okay, um, money to our local economy now, out of town visits to our area. In other areas, people spend an average of $60 a day. And if they spend the night, they're going to spend a hundred dollars a day average. Trails are great for our environment. And they bring beauty to our city landscape, neighborhood streets, lakes and parks. And, and as they add a bonus, all of us, it's going to help increase our property values. You know, they're doing great now, but with that, it's going to make it even better. And where y'all, as Sid, come in is, we need you to spearhead these improvements by providing easements for trails. Okay, that would mean, um, to properties, having properties that are getting sold, having easements, say in the front where in the future sidewalks can be part of that. For walking, hiking, biking, triking, triking is for older people who get on a recumbent bike that's got three wheels and they can motor down the road for their, for their exercise. And what I'm asking is, and, and would love to see is for y'all to vote to provide the following easements to all current and future owned Sid properties. All properties being sold or transferred include these easements for trails. Now that's a, I'm bringing that up now and it'll be brought up again in January when we get more time.
Could you formalize that for us a little bit so we can understand exactly what you're saying?
During the future, we'll get you some, something and hopefully that you can look at voting on, okay? To promote the trails here. And Sid, according to Roy, he says Sid does qualify for RDOT, for the Department of Transportation, Arkansas, trail grants. And that is fantastic because they, they are so valuable. For every two dollars we spend, they give a dollars. So you say we have to have a twenty-five thousand dollar grant. For five thousand dollars, you're gonna get twenty thousand. Okay, and the horn up, and I know it's a stretch. We're all pensioned in these around here. But that, that would help a lot, you know, with that investment coming from the outside. Small investment from our community and the large investment from Arkansas Department of Transportation. And those, those processes will begin, will be beginning in February, I believe. So February, March is when the letters start coming out. And right now, we're, the city is taking advantage of one this autumn. I mean, like right now, it's, it's getting close to breaking ground.
Are we allowed to get a grant?
According to this, yes. Okay, I've gotta check that a little closer.
Please. Check that, please, because I'm not certain that's correct.
Yeah.
I have a question too. Do you have a location or a certain area where we could look to see what properties that we own, maybe in that trail or in that park or land?
Yeah, I've got a map that I've created from the Platts, okay? And right now, the one I have, I don't know if it'll fit in my car hanging out here. I have it in the van, fine, but I don't know if it'll fit in the car being, but it's the same one that's on, you know, at the SID office now. It's a portion of that. It's the part out here. And I've highlighted all the areas that are common areas that are between the homes and between the properties.
Good, good.
They come out, but it would be nice if we had, say, a lot at a corner where they come out, you know, so that you've got a bigger entry. Instead of a twenty or thirty-foot section, we might have a space for a parking or for a, you know, bench or whatever to go in.
If you would try to get with me after the first of the year, we could sit down together and look at those parcels and kind of determine which ones are SID and which ones aren't. And then maybe before that January meeting, we'd be able to give a little bit more. I'd be glad to help in whatever I can do.
You know, and that's kind of what we're hoping to keep and look at at the meeting that we didn't have this month. And hopefully, you're gonna bring that, the big map over when you move over. If it's possible to preserve that map and set it up somewhere where the general public can look at it.
Right, right. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a question. I believe if I understood right, there would be an easement on every lot that would be sold in the future. Is that gonna be a detriment, a detriment for selling lots? Or is that gonna be helpful? I hope for many people, if you're into trails, it's helpful. However, if you're selling small lots, and in the future, people are considering building a house on there, will the fact that every lot has an easement for a trail be a plus or negative? That's all I want to know.
Good question.
Good question.
Very good question.
What I'm discussing, what I'm regarding, in, in most places, you have easement on the front end for a sidewalk. If you live in a city that has sidewalks, this is not a walking community. I take my life and my hands for walking a dog outside my yard. So, you know, and now he's always, he's unable to walk past the wrong way. But it was scary, and around here, there is nothing. You can't get around without walking over people's yards or anything.
That's true. It takes a lot more, just from what I know about this, and it's gonna take a lot more discussion. But the, the creation of easement is, y'all must have to go into a subdivision committee, if you will. And that involves approval by the city and by the county. So it's a lot more than SID that's involved or something like that. And there's also a survey cost and all stuff like that. Is that right, as far as you know?
Thank you all for your participation and your patience, and move to adjourn.
I'll second that motion, or I'll make the motion, whatever.
I'll second it.
Made, seconded, and carried. Thank you.